I'd like to call the committee, the whole, for the Village of Cary for Tuesday, November 17th to order with roll call, please.
Dudek?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Kozler?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public comment where the public is able to make an issue-oriented comment, not otherwise on the agenda. I don't think we had anybody sign in, so we'll go ahead and close that. For consideration of the November 3, 2015 Committee, the whole meeting minutes, were there any corrections, edits? No, it's a little gone to consent agenda. Thank you. The same with the November 3, 2015 Village Board meeting minutes? Any changes, edits, corrections? Thank you. That'll be on the consent agenda. Moving right along, we'll go into a discussion regarding the metro station.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Morimoto and I will provide you a oral report tonight. Just by way of background, as the board is aware, staff earlier this fall worked with the board to come to, I believe, unanimous decision to pursue a metro train station project for Cary. As the board recalls, we received through Metro's assistance and Village assistance a $2 million federal grant for a Cary station project. And with that, there's been some preliminary conceptual planning to a warming shelter station concept on the inbound side of the tracks, which the village, and at least so far in our process, believes to be the most logical expenditure of funds because it'll provide protection for commuters on the side of the tracks where most people use the train to go downtown to Chicago or southern areas from Cary. We have continued to work with various agencies on the project. As the board recalls, the Illinois Department of Transportation was involved because of the sighting of the station facility concept near the right-of-way of Route 14 Northwest Highway. We were asked by Metro to work with IDOT staff on the concept plan to see if they would allow some encroachment potentially upon their right-of-way and any other kind of safety issues or concerns that they might have, that they might want to flag for us now before we head into design or further process with the project. And we did that. We were successful in receiving a letter November 4th from the department after some work and meeting with them to receive it at their offices in Schaumburg. The letter basically says they'll review the plans, they're supportive of the concept, they want to see it in detail, and they are going to ask us to do a guardrail study or some other protection study for the facility itself when it's constructed. And that's good and logical feedback from the department, and we were expecting that sort of response, but we were pleased to get at least their conceptual concurrence with moving forward. And so, we then subsequently scheduled a meeting at Metro's headquarters in Chicago. Eric and I met there yesterday with about four or five staff representatives of Metro, as well as two gentlemen representing the Union Pacific Railroad. All of them were helpful to Cary, and all of them are, in general, supportive of a project. But as you may know, Union Pacific is a private railroad. They have, you know, land rights and protection rights on their facilities and their space that have to be dealt with, separate from the public agency of Metro. And so, we'll be in dialogue with their staff about some plans that we did. We believe through some swapping out, as you know, our goal is to have the existing depot building demolished and to better use the space on the other side of the tracks. There'll be some discussions that go on with Union Pacific about that. We believe it's about 500 square feet of extra space that we need covered at the back end of this on possibly Union Pacific land from what is filled today. But what we learned is that, and it's fine, we believe and we will be able to relocate the ticket agent to the other side of the tracks, to this warming shelter facility. But there also, from our meeting yesterday, we were informed, there may be some storage space that they use in the existing depot building that we were informed about, that they're going to want to talk about through this process. And that was fine. We'll continue that. We were told that in December, early December, we'll hear back from Union Pacific's corporate officials. We're working with two gentlemen out of the Chicago office now, which is good and helpful. I hope in December, we can get to some level of understanding about the real estate side of this as well. Metro has agreed to take that on as the lead agency with UP for us, which is helpful. And a good sign that they're working to try and get the station project moving along. The key decision point we're now at is how to proceed with the design, engineering, and planning side of this job. We have a ballpark budget of approximately $2.5, $3 million on the presumption that it's a facility in concept like what you've discussed. And as we said, there's about $2 million in federal money for it. And the good news is through this somewhat negotiating process with Metro and the grant authorities and the Regional Transportation Authority, RTA, is that the terms on that $2 million are not as, apparently, as complicated as we first thought. So, there certainly will need to be some village match for the project, which we've been budgeting through the parking fund, but it is good news that the $2 million will be able to be used fairly sensibly. But right now, on the design planning phase, Eric and I want to recommend that we take on the lead agency role for that part of the project. That's not always how these projects proceed, but in this case, we think Cary should lead that. It'll give us more control over the process. It'll also be a share of our involvement that will be, in essence, some services and costs associated with the project. This can be a chunk of what our financial contribution is, as well as a workload effort that we would manage internally. But essentially, we would go out to request for proposals for design, engineering, architect services, and it might be a joint venture between a civil engineer, possibly, and an architect, because there certainly is architect work in this. It would give you, and I'll talk about cost in a minute, as far as a budget, but it'd give you better control over the appearance, deciding those sorts of things. Of course, there's Metro approvals, and they have their own process that we have to comply with. There still are some guidelines that have to be followed with this aspect of the job because there's federal money involved. But I believe it gives us the most control over the project. And my guess is that it's in the $200,000 to $300,000 range in terms of investment for this piece. We had, through the March budget workshop, set aside our fund balance amount in the parking fund. We have a million in fund balance in the parking fund, which is from commuter parking fees dedicated for train station and parking lot facility improvements, machines, pay machines, those things. Certainly didn't want to necessarily spend the whole million dollars on this job, and I don't know that we'll have to, per se. We'll have to see. But the first $200,000 to $300,000, I believe, should be allocated to this phase. The construction phase was also discussed yesterday with Metro staff, and they, and after our discussion and back and forth, the parties believe it makes best sense to have Metro's staff maintain the control over the construction bidding phase of the job because there is a significant amount of federal regulations that tie to that process, and they feel more comfortable with the cash flow on that from the standpoint of the federal grant by controlling that part. Now, they've committed to us the work effort to do that in a timely fashion. That's, you know, solely our concern because initially, our thought would be to have hoped to have broken ground on the job in the fall of 2016. It looks like, practically speaking, this is groundbreaking in March and April of 2017, the way we see this layout at this time. And that's with the presumption that we control the design, engineering phase, we move it through, and we have abidable construction plans by July, August of 2016. Now, Eric and I are optimistic that we can accelerate that schedule if we decide to own it. And we believe that if you give us direction, we could, by January, late January, early February, have, you know, possibly proposals in hand from joint ventures for the architect design work, which would be fairly soon, you know, than what I think Metro would have expected us to have it done by. Then, of course, you have to go through, and you would be involved through probably Committee the whole process in the design element of that. We would certainly have that selected firm come to you and say, "Okay, here's, you know, our proposed design, here's some of the submittals or cut sheets for the architecture, the roof type design, the tile work, the windows, the, all those amenities." You would be in a place to comment on that, which I think is important, and certainly Metro would as well. But, you know, in that time window, probably April, May, you know, if not sooner, that would be when that would be in front of you. So, today, we're just briefing you on this at a high level. The question is, are you comfortable with us proceeding with the design phase? I may consider, in talking with Village Attorney, of possibly bringing, if you are interested, a resolution back to you December 1st, to say, "Yes, we concur. We would like to do the design, planning, engineering phase as the lead agency." I may ask for that to be memorialized. That way, it may help us with Metro. But wanted to get your feedback, any questions? I mean, I think the story is, it's a good story. There's obviously a number of agencies involved, and, I mean, the Union Pacific folks are going to help us, but, you know, that's a couple-month process to work through their land act on that. And so, basically, we're proposing to go concurrent with the design work while that track is playing out. But I think it's a good story, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Lot of information to think and process tonight. I'm not ready to give any kind of go-ahead at this point, so I'm going to look at what you just said, so if anybody else has any other information that they want to add to it, but I'll take a look at what you just said, and then I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I mean, the next meeting is December 1st, and you want us to come back and say, "Yeah, we're ready to move forward with the design phase." So, no, I'm not prepared to say that at this point.
Anybody else have any comments?
When was our current station built?
You have that off the '84?
What century?
Lincoln, the President.
1882.
1984.
Really? I thought it was older than that. So, my comment is, you don't build a train station that often. I don't want any ugly building, so I think if we have to spend some of the monies that we have set aside, you know, to make it a nice public improvement, then we should really consider that. I'm of the belief that, and you've heard me say this before, Mark, that public investment sparks private investment. We haven't had public investment pretty much since I've been on this board. I think we really need to have a jewel in the central business district that people see and want to be part of, so I'm all for moving ahead. I'd like us to be the lead agency, and I am not adverse to spending some of the money that we have set aside to make the building look much nicer. I also would suggest, as I did once before when we started talking about this, I haven't been stuck at a train station or at a stoplight rather in front of the Mount Prospect Train Station over the weekend. They have a very nice message board that they use for community events. In the minute or so that I sat there, I saw everything from, you know, the farmer's market to Committee the Whole times to Village Board, and just in a matter of a minute, it was a very nice sign. And I think I said, early on, when we talked about this metro station, we absolutely have to have a village sign as part of this development because we don't have anything that addresses anything that we do in this town. It has to be part of this.
Kim, do you have any comments?
So, I just want to clarify, if we are not the lead agency, then, so we pretty much just subscribe to whatever Metro gives us, then?
Well, I think there's two parts. It's a good question. They expect some contribution for this project as it's designed. It just depends on what piece and how. And what I'm saying is, one way to contribute is through this component of design lead agency. If it's not that, it's probably going to be something else, you know, in its place. So, it's not, they'll do it for free, or we do it.
Right, but I guess what would something else be? Can you go into a little bit more detail?
Construction costs, you know, other upgrades, land acquisition costs for Union Pacific, other parts of the job that you decide that you want down the road, some of which may or may not be reimbursable or a part of what they would consider to be their part.
So, one way or another, we're going to be, then, you know, paying into something, correct?
That's how I view it, yeah, because the project as designed, it's probably in ballpark budget, $2.5, $3 million or so, unless you decide to upgrade it much further, and there's $2 million of federal money, so the delta's us.
And I would agree with Trustee Dudek, that I'd rather have the say on the design of it if that's going to be our contribution.
Okay.
David?
I'll echo those two.
And I'm not saying that I'm not opposing, I'm opposing that. I'm just saying that, boy, you threw a lot of information at us here tonight, and then you're expecting us to come back on the next meeting, and, boy, yeah, we're ready to move forward. I'd like to have a chance to kind of digest the information that you gave to me, and that the original $2 million was given to us to renovate the current building, and then we had that changed over to that, then we could apply it to a project on the other side of the tracks. Anything over and above that, beyond that, I think then we're responsible for, is basically what it comes down to. Is that correct, or am I mistaken?
The money is not ours. The money is Metro's through a federal grant.
Through a federal grant, correct.
It's not Cary's, per se. It's not ours to spend. It's theirs to essentially govern. And the initial concept was for a, basically, a refurbishment of that existing building and then some warming shelters on the other side, which is the inbound side. And so, that was what the grant was designed for initially. And we said we wanted to be more involved in what that project was, and we felt we were somewhat concerned that the investment in the existing building was somewhat an investment in an obsolete facility, although others would disagree. It's got a ticket agent in it today, and as I said earlier, Union Pacific has some storage space in it, but it's on the quote-unquote "wrong" side of the tracks for most folks to use. So, that's why we got involved in the job at a higher level.
But placing the, this goes back to the whole concept of having a train station downtown. Just by putting it on the other side of the tracks does not solve the problem of which side of the tracks it's on for a train station down there. The problem is people crossing the tracks to get to the other side to ride the train down Chicago. Moving the train station over there, everybody parks on our side, on this side of the tracks, so there's still going to be everybody crossing the tracks to go over to the other side. That doesn't solve that issue, okay?
It wasn't designed to.
I thought you just said, though, that it solved the problem, or I had to listen.
It gives people more of an opportunity to get to the train station rather than the last minute. The last couple of times I've taken the train down there, people are crossing the tracks when the lights are flashing, so it would stop that. People, instead of stopping at the train station, instead of going to the train station where it is right now, they would be already across the tracks going to the ticket agency.
But the $2 million to begin with allowed us to, I thought it allowed us to upgrade this current station and then also have warming stations on the other side.
Yeah, that's right.
So, we could have kept the current station and then had the two warming stations on the other side.
Interior.
And they can buy a ticket on the train. So, okay.
But we, including you, gave direction to us.
Correct, correct. And I read that in the paper, and I thought, when I, because you brought it up again tonight, the unanimous, you know, and I read that in the paper, and I just thought, okay.
Well, obviously, you have some questions.
I do, I do, yes.
Well, you know, why don't, can you maybe make an appointment, talk with Chris and Eric, and you can talk about the meeting and everything, and get some of your questions answered?
That would be fine.
Ellen, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I personally agree that it would be a great, as you're coming into our town, to have that moved over. I think for commuters, we do have, the majority of our commuters are going into Chicago, so they're going from that side. So, I think that making the actual station over there is conducive to serving our residents. And I love the concept, what we looked at when, I think, Eric, you made all those plans up about what we could do down there, and I would much rather have money putting into it that we have the design control over design, because I think that's outwardly what the appearance is going to be as people are coming in, if they're seeing that. And I'd rather have us saying, "We want as much control over that portion of it as possible." So, I am, I'm actually very excited. I think that it's a great opportunity and love the idea of having a sign there because we need it. I think that that would be fantastic, and I think it adds a lot of exciting opportunities for Cary, so I'm excited about it and looking forward to getting the ball rolling with it.
Jim, you have any comments?
Just, I'm for moving this along. I think we just need to be mindful, if we commit to a project that it's $200,000 or $300,000 we're committing to, that we don't get into a situation where it ends up being a million. That's my only concern, but I'm for moving it along.
I would comment that my point is that that isn't the cap of what your exposure would be. That is the component right now that we're at a decision point for, which is the design work. I do expect that the amount over the $2 million is probably mostly Cary's. And, but what I would say is, discussions continue, and I would expect possibly some land acquisition piece there, and we will certainly talk to others about funding that land acquisition piece or some of it, so those discussions continue. But I'm not suggesting that our overall project cost is limited to the $200,000 to $300,000 for design, so I just want to be clear.
So, when would we know what the total project cost would be?
Well, by summer, in theory, there would be a design, actual hard bid, you know, and obviously more fleshed-out budgeting tied to the unit costs associated with what you, you know, ask it to be. And so, let's say in April, May, we have an architect and civil engineer in front of you for discussion about the project. I mean, there are, as you know, you know, value engineering things that can be done, additions for appearance sake that you might want in terms of how it looks, that may have cost elements to it, and you'll probably be able to say yea, nay, or, you know, some other ideas that you have that may drive budget to some extent and potentially our share of the cost. So, I think in that April, May timeframe, you'll probably be in a hard position to understand that cost, but if the overall budget's $2.5, $3 million, you're in this $500,000 to $1 million.
Which, again, we have, how much budgeted in the parking fund right now? How much do we have in there?
The entire balance is budgeted. We didn't expect a spend this year out of the parking fund, which appears to be possibly the case, except for some small amount of these costs, if we decide to take them on, that would be accrued in this fiscal year. So, we budgeted a full million, but, you know, the goal was not necessarily to spend that all completely on this project, from my financial perspective.
I would agree.
Chris, can I just get clarification then? So, the original grant was for $2 million to upgrade the current station and then put in warming stations on the other side? Okay. That's all I need to know.
All right. I think that we can, we have a majority of the board saying move forward a little bit. All right, moving forward to the discussion regarding the winter operations review and pedestrian snow routes. Eric?
Hate even hearing that, "snow routes."
The nerve of you to talk about snow routes.
Necessary evil in my line of work, but thank you, Mayor, and Village Board. Just wanted to give you all a preview of some of the routine but important aspects to our winter operations for the upcoming season. First item is road salt update. Through the purchasing, through the joint bid process with Lake County and McHenry County, the village was able to procure salt at a unit cost substantially lower than the previous year, which we were dealt with some very high costs through the state central management services joint bid. So, we've gone from over $113 per tonne down to between $73 and $79 a tonne. Still a higher number than experienced over the past several years, but it is definitely much more manageable and within and below the target that we were anticipating. Through that joint purchase, we now have a full shed of salt. We got the first half shipment from the Lake County bid of standard salt, and then we're anticipating later this next month or so, the shipment of the enhanced magnesium chloride salt, which will be used on, for the first time at the village on a trial basis to see how it can reduce our salt usage and maybe reduce our service times through the extreme cold temperature events. Other winter prep items were in process of reviewing and modifying some of our assigned routes to contingency plans. That's just based on current staffing and current needs based on our specific skill sets and equipment. So, that's in concert with some of the recent training and refresher that's going on for staff. Many of our staff attended the McHenry County Snow and Salt Operations Training, which is held annually. So, it gives our operators a good refresher on the techniques involved and talking to peers, learning other, the best case, best practices in the industry. And then lastly, last year was the very first year that the village embarked on a new program, a new service, to plow some of the higher-use pedestrian routes in the village. These routes were designated by a resolution last year, and it basically concentrates the sidewalks around some of the downtown areas and high school and elementary schools in town, just in an effort to help the pedestrians navigate these areas that are normally cleared of snow by the adjacent property owners. We purchased a articulated wheel loader with a snow blower attachment onto it, which enables us, after the end of our routine plowing from the roadways, once that operation is complete and the event has ended, then our staff then takes this equipment and hits the routes designated here with that equipment. Based on our experience last year, the lag, lag time after the event didn't appear to cause any significant service issues or complaints, and based on that, we're recommending to continue the program with the exact same recommended list. And if the board has any questions, the routes are highlighted on the map from the packet and on the screen right now before you.
These, the, we're sticking with the day two and day three after an event, right, for the sidewalks?
Correct.
Is the bridge over the river done, Eric?
Yes, that's part of our route.
Goes to the river.
That's what I was wondering. Do we go over the river, do we start at the river and then go west? It looks like we start and go west.
Believe we make the turnaround, because we start, obviously, from our yard on the west and go that way. I believe we'd make the turnaround right at that last street, right by the bridge.
So, that Arlington Village?
Arlington?
Yes.
Arlington Club?
Yep. So, you know, to me, I don't know if Fox River Grove has this type of equipment or if they do anything, but the, you know, the bridge is, I recognize, probably a challenge because any snowplow that comes over there just plops the stuff right back on that sidewalk again. But that, to me, has always been an extremely dangerous appearing stretch of roadway to walk, and there are a lot of people that walk it amazingly. I don't know if there's a, you know, possibility of asking Fox River Grove if they might be willing to pay us if we did that stretch. I mean, it just seems like it's somewhat senseless to start right at the edge, when really, the most dangerous piece right there is actually getting over the bridge, if you're a pedestrian, and I just.
We'll talk to them about it.
Yeah, I mean, if they'd be willing to pay per hour whatever it cost our guy to do it, or something like that, to cover, you know, the use of the equipment, I think it'd just be a nicer touch, that's all.
Yeah, we'll look into it, definitely.
I don't know that I'd commit that we charge them, but there could be some trades and other things that off-balance, so.
Yeah, just tell them to give us a couple acres on the river.
Any other questions on this? That was easy. Now, let's move along to discussion regarding the annual real estate tax levy for the tax year 2015.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce Financial Consultant Michael Ducharme and Mary Vintreuler, Finance Manager. The discussion tonight is designed to be a committee-level discussion, and, you know, we want to get in front of you the information that we have while some is still, we're still awaiting from the county assessor. So, Michael's going to give you a general overview of what the levy process is, how it works, and we'd be glad to answer your questions interactively thereafter. So, Michael?
As Chris stated, we were hoping that by now, we would have received the final information from McHenry County. It appears they're waiting for some last-minute appeal information, making some calculations before they release the numbers. As a result, this evening, we're going to pretty much announce a tentative levy number that we'll use until we make the final decision on the levy, which I think currently, we're looking at December 15th. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
As you know, the Village of Cary is a non-home rule community, which means that we're subject to tax caps, which means our tax extension from last year has to be the lesser of 5% or the CPI, which this year is eight tenths of 1%, so 0.8%. lesser of 5% or the CPI, which this year is eight tenths of 1%, so 0.8%. On page two of the memo that was in your packet, it provides you an understanding of how our levy appeared last year. And if anybody has any questions just related to how it's broken down, I'd be more than happy to answer that. We are required to pass a tax levy by the last Tuesday in the month of December. So on December 15th, which is our second board meeting of the month, we would need to pass it so it could be filed in time and filed with McHenry County. This year, for your information, we had received from our actuary the amount that we would need to fund the police pension fund at for next year. As you'll notice from the breakdown on page two, currently that amount is 585,000. Next year, that number jumps to 720,000, which is an increase of 130,000. For purposes of our discussion tonight, to provide you with an estimate of what I believe our levy would be for next year, I have come up with a number which is 2,530,413. That assumes two things, an increase in the equalized assessed valuation of 2% and using our cap, which is the CPI or 0.8% in order to extend our levy. If you were to extend it out, take our existing levy, multiply it by 0.8, the amount I've given you is fairly close to what that number can be. What I'm saying is that is the most our levy could probably be, unless from the information we received from McHenry County, they say there is a lot of new property being added to the tax rolls, which would provide us a little larger cushion. Now, in order to arrive at the tax levy or be able to fund the tax levy, the board has a couple of options that they can make. Because the tax levy itself is only going up by $20,000, that $20,000 by itself is not going to fund the additional amount that we will need in order to fund the police pension fund levy. Now, before I go any further, the reason that that's important is for our police pension fund, the village is required to fund either the amount that is determined by the Department of Insurance, or the village has to hire an independent actuary and come up with its own calculation in order to arrive at that police pension fund component. That's how we arrived at the $720,000 number that appeared in the actuarial report. The major reason for the significant jump this year is there was a change in the mortality tables that are being used to calculate that figure. Going back to our various options, we have two of them. We can go with the increase of the $20,000 in our tentative levy. And in order to arrive at the other amount, we would reduce the general corporate purposes line item that is currently showing as 249. We would reduce it between the difference of the $20,000 and the amount we would need to fund the police pension fund. Thereby, the police pension line item would jump from 585,000 up to the 720,000. That is the easiest way to do it. However, I don't want to be short sighted and misinform you because there are other ways that you could fund that, but it is harder to track. And if you're able to keep it on the tax levy as one line item, you'll always know the amount that's being funded in the tax levy for your police pension fund. Some people use a variety of sources, very difficult to track. Are there any questions so far?
Mike, you mentioned that you're assuming or you're hoping for an increase in the EAV of 2.5%?
2% is what I used.
2%. Okay.
2% is what I used. And in all honesty to you, that's a tough number to come up with, so I kind of look at what other villages around us have assumed to try and be fairly conservative, but I don't want to be overly conservative. I mean, earlier on this year, I was thinking, God, I'd love to be able to just break even, to have our EAV actually increased by 2%. It's a very positive thing, and hopefully it'll continue.
Well, if the increase in the EAV is increasing to 2%, then we really don't have any, isn't there an automatic increase in the amount of taxes that can be raised by the village? The reason we're talking about raising the tax levy is because the EAV has been going down in the previous years. Is this the first year that you're assuming there's going to be an increase in the EAV?
Well, I think there's a couple pieces we need to look at. What happens when the equalized assessed valuation goes up? The village's tax rate drops, okay? The amount we can levy, the maximum amount we can levy is controlled by the tax caps. The most we're talking about here is $20,000 that it can vary, okay? When the EAV goes up, village tax rates go down. Assuming the property goes up on every residential property, based on the fact that the tax rate went down, the average resident should pay a little less to the village of Kari than they did the previous year. The correlation is between the EAV and its impact on the village's tax rate.
And Mike, can you explain one other thing clearly so we all understand it? As a PTAL community, property tax extension limitation community as a non-home rule community, the 5% versus the CPI versus the new growth factor, can you walk the trustees through that one more time as to how those pieces are different?
Well, the statute states that a non-home rule community, that their tax rate or their tax extension, which is your tax levy, has to be the lesser of that 5% or the CPI. CPI, of course, varies. This year, it's 0.8%. Last year, I think it was 1.5%. Year before that, I think it was 1.7%.
And so any new growth is not a part of that? Is that what you're saying?
Any new growth is not a part of that and provides a little bit of cushion. So because of new growth, if all of a sudden there was a brand new shopping center that popped up in the village of Kari, and it was worth $10 million, that taxable value from that improvement, in the very first year it comes on the tax rolls, provides the village of Kari, if it chooses to, to take an additional boost in their tax levy for that new growth that's appearing on their tax rolls. If you don't take it the first year it comes on the tax rolls, your chance is gone forever because now going forward, you're subject to the formula of the tax caps. At least in the three years that I've been involved in the process for the village of Kari, the amount of new growth that's come on the tax rolls has been minimal. It's really not impacting what's happening to your tax levy at all. Hopefully that will change going forward.
Could you explain, I'm a little bit lost when you say when the equalized assessed values go up, the tax rate goes down? Because I understand what you're saying overall, that, but we're talking about there is a set tax rate, right?
Only after the tax levies are finalized. The village currently has a set tax rate based on everything that occurred last year. By us filing a tax levy with the county, the county takes all of that information based off of everyone's equalized assessed valuations in their villages, based on the amounts that the individual villages, school districts, park districts, townships, ask for in their levies, based on those final amounts they ask for, that generates a final tax rate for each district. And that tax rate for each of those districts is probably largely impacted by what happens to the overall PAB for the entire taxing body. Hopefully that answered.
And so if our budget's $8.5 million in the general fund, you know, we're talking about a $20,000 decision here, maximum.
Maximum.
And that will be subject to review and hopefully all that data be in the next couple of weeks, but that's the decision point. And I'll say in the four years I've been here, I mean, that's because of the CPI is at 0.8%. I mean, that's the smallest increase amount that I've seen. And I look back over the last four years, the board, if you averaged out, you probably raised taxes a point and a quarter or a point and a half on average over the last four years. The boards that I've worked for have at times just levied the new growth in the EAV, which have been a part of that percentage, or the CPI, but not, we haven't per se zeroed in any year, no increase. Typically, the boards have taken at least the new growth. Last year, that was a grand total of $8,000. But, you know, some years, we have not taken the CPI, you know, factor. We've only taken the new growth. You can do what you want up to the cap here, but if the cap was determined to be decided, it's around 20,000 of new money.
One other point that I'd just like to leave with you, so you have an understanding going forward. This year, that police pension line item went from 585,000 to 720,000. Next year, I would not expect it to go up that large. I don't see any perceived change in changing the mortality tables. But I would caution you because that police pension number will continue to go up. The reason that police pension number will continue to go up is our assumed rate of return that we are using assumes that the pension fund will earn 7.5%. Department of Insurance out there, the independent actuary that is used by the police pension fund themselves assumes 6.5%. By the sheer nature of us using 7.5%, the biggest impact of that is that tax levy number is reduced because our estimated rate of return is higher. If we had to, or if we chose to drop that number in the future, that would increase the tax levy based on the fact that that assumed rate of return would be dropping.
Didn't we? I'll go ahead.
Mike, was that rate of return, was that the same before we bumped it up to $10 million for the fund?
Well, I can answer that because I was here before him.
All right.
When I got here, it was 8% assumption. We lowered it to 7.5% with the goal to get it to 7 by about now, but we're not there yet. And the decision with respect to the 10 million was discussed in March of this year at Budget Workshop. Pension Board had come to us and said correctly that if they got their asset value to 10 million, they have a different level of investments that they can get into by statute. And we said we'd make a progress payment towards that. And we have that before us now, and we're recommending a one-time $200,000 move over. That's not going to get them immediately to 10 million. As you know, there's been a lot of volatility in the market this year, but that was a separate decision from the interest rate return.
Right.
That was my question too, though, because I knew we reduced the amount of the expected return on investment. So we were at 8% and we reduced it down to 7.
Seven and a half.
Or 7.5 now, but we're trying to get to 7. Okay.
So that's going to make the amount that, you know, we need to add a higher amount to the pension fund, and we're probably due for it. And I'll be looking at that as I prepare your budget for this coming March.
I'm still a little lost too, like Jim said about the EAV. If you're assuming an increase of 2%, then last year, what did you assume last year was going to be the increase, or did you assume nothing for last year?
Well, let's answer that with the sheet that's in the packet. Because the packet says.
We didn't have to assume anything because we had the final calculation from McHenry.
Was there late in giving us?
Okay, but what was it last year?
Well, I'm looking at this EAV chart for years 2008 through 2014 that's in your packet. And you see in 2008 that the EAV was 612 million, and in 2014 estimated it was 393 million, right? So you see that deduct, you know, how it reduced? So last year, Mike, according to the table, it says it's a percent reduction at EAV of 4.36%.
That was determined by the county, though. We did not have to.
4.36% last year. So this year, you're assuming there's going to be a 6.3%?
In essence.
A 6.3%?
And Jeff, that's.
36% increase?
Yes. But that's a number because we need to have an estimate just to kind of work with going forward till we finalize it. And really, I'm just, it's not like I have a crystal ball that sees every piece of property in the village of Kari. I'm just going off what others around us seem to be using as a concern.
And that's important because we have a truth in taxation requirement by rule that we have to have this discussion at least 20 days before you act upon it. And the odds situation here is the county assessor hasn't given us the final calculation yet. So that's why he's hedging a bit and he's providing his best answer tonight.
I don't, Jeff, I don't expect it to change much. I mean, that number, that's pretty much as high as it can go unless there's a bunch of new growth that's been added to the tax rolls.
So basically what you're getting at is as the EAVs come down, we keep raising the tax rate to make up the difference.
That is one of the options that you have, yes.
And if the EAVs go, let's say, just fantasy land or a good double over the next year, then our tax rate is less.
Yes.
But we would get more money, no?
If we choose to. See, generally, I came from the world of home rule communities. Generally, the biggest difference there is because a home rule community is not subject to the tax caps, they're not as vulnerable, which means that they generally create an amount of money on an annual basis that they're looking for and levy it. Generally, it's a reasonable number. The reason they can do that is in the event something comes up out of the ordinary, because they're not subject to tax caps, next year, they'll just increase their levy substantially to make up for it if they have missed something.
But I think it's important to indicate, we get, it can get complicated, you start talking rate and EAV. I mean, we're looking, according to the village of Kari annual tax levy tax year 14, last year's levy totaled 2.51 million, okay? That was the total number of dollars that we taxed for in that, you know, the EAV is like a pie, and it gets split up different based on how the EAV is assessed. But we need the 2.1, 2.51 million, and that comes out of that calculation. The challenge here has been property values have theoretically gone down, and the dollar value that we're taking hasn't gone down. That's typically the philosophy discussion that goes on about this. And what we don't know, we're optimistic, it'd be good news if the EAV went up 2%. We're hoping it goes up because it hasn't gone up in the six years of that scale that we gave you. But I think it's important to look at it from a hard dollar standpoint and what we taxed for, because it's a little bit easier to understand it.
I would tell you as a board, the biggest number you're concerned with is what your total levy is. You know what the tax levy is currently. You know, based on whatever the, whatever the EAV or your tax rate is, you know what it is you're asking for. What's important for you is to control whatever that final number is. Once you know what the final number and you're comfortable with, then you can look at it from the standpoint of what's my EAV? from the standpoint of what's my E A V and what's my tax rate? Because people, for the most part, they're really not looking at, they don't really care much what their tax rate is. They're looking at what it is they have to pay on their property tax bill. And you control that by controlling the amount of the levy.
And that's what we're basically talking about, is the amount of the levy.
That's exactly what we're talking.
So when you're talking about the rate, that doesn't really compute because we're just asking for a certain dollar amount, period. So no matter what the E A V is, we want a certain amount, a certain amount of money.
Right. We need a certain amount of money.
And you want, people want to increase the rate just in case the E A Vs come in really low. That way, we can keep the amount of money we are asking for, correct?
Well, yes.
In essence, yeah.
In essence.
But it's important, I think, for framing in these discussions we've had over the, it's a $20,000 maximum decision. You can decide to have it be just new growth, you can have it be zero, you can have it be 20,000, you can have it be some kind of hybrid. But, you know, I think just to simplify the discussion, that's the maximum.
The reason I made that point, though, is when you have a police pension fund and you have a number that's going up each and every year, and you're subject to tax caps, you can pretty much count on the fact that whatever your levy is able to go up will probably be offset by what that police pension fund, this number is going to have to increase on an annual basis. It's not coming down.
While we're thinking, I think it's important to put more context out there. So your budget's like eight and a half million dollars general fund, and you pull in about two and a half million of property taxes. And so I think it's important to indicate for the public that the village has other revenue sources that it draws upon to subsidize general operations that some other taxing bodies don't have. I mean, state shared revenues, sales tax, income tax, those are obviously significant components of what funds your budget. Also, why we're highly concerned about what's going on in Springfield from the standpoint of those being taken away, because those are a huge part of how you subsidize your budget. The other component is that, and I'm seeing it now in tracing communities that have January 1 budgets, we have May 1 budget, you're seeing a number of suburbs right now that are, some of which are home rule, in this interesting position of actually predicting that the state legislature is going to have a two-year property tax cap frozen, no, 0% ruling for two years. And you're seeing home rule communities, of which we are not, trying to get ahead of the legislation by taxing large amounts now on the presumption that the next two years they can't. And I think that's, quite honestly, pretty sad.
Excellent.
And, but the bottom line is that's going on. I'm not advocating that here, and in fact, you can't do that because we're a P T L community, already tax capped and have been for many years. But you're seeing some strange decisions being made by municipalities that normally wouldn't do that because of the fear of what the legislature is going to do. So we don't have that luxury, I guess. I don't know that it's a luxury. You simply have a capped $20,000 decision. However, you have the same operational issues that those towns have with policing, public work, street operations, those other functions that our service levels to our residents. So I think it's important to look at it from that perspective. The tax levy articles that you're seeing in the newspapers are all over the place right now because of that state legislation possibility.
Including some that are zeros.
Correct. Mike, you talk about the pension costs of the police pension fund needing to be increased so much. What's driving that cost?
What's driving?
What's driving the increases in those costs?
Well, part of it is the fact of probably interest rate returns. Interest rates are fairly low. Matter of fact, fixed income, their investments are made up of two pieces, fixed income and equities. Because of the size of their investment portfolio, 55% of their total investments have to be in fixed income. If I went in the fixed income market right now, I'm probably looking at 1% to 2% returns. So if your assumed rate of return is seven and a half percent, the difference between the equities and the fixed income or has to be made up with the equity market, okay? So the thought was if we could get the police pension fund to that $10 million limitation, they're then able to invest 65% in equities as opposed to 55. Please, it's not. In some ways, they would wish they could invest more in equities. There are many states out there that allow people to invest more in equities. The way it's set up currently in the state, it's pretty, it attempts to keep safety figured into it so those investments don't get out of balance.
But we got to give them clear answers. So basically, they're saying where our investment this last year has been 585,000 in that police pension fund, we have to put in 720 next year.
Yes.
That's, there's no choice. And the problem with that, though, is that that's on the seven and a half percent assumption basis. If that, if we made the right policy decision here to go to 7% or 6.5%, some communities are at 6.75. That 720 is going to go up to 8, 900,000. And, you know, we need to put that in. We've been trying to gradually get into that, and we're not there yet. So that doesn't mean raise the taxes 20,000 by any means. It just is a good time to explain to you the hard costs that we do have, and as long as you have a police department, you know, and even if you don't, you still have the obligations to those that have pensions. So we have to deal with the cost of that.
Michael, when do we have to be fully funded per the law?
2040, yes, 2040.
So 2040, so by 2040, folks, we have to have the full.
Please understand also one thing. I just, it's important that I tell you this. Our interest rate assumption is seven and a half. That is totally up to you as a building owner. Other people can say, we'd like you to lower it. The Village of Kerry has total say in terms of what that interest rate assumption is. The reason you do is because you're the one having to fund it out there to 2040. If there's a shortfall when 2040 arrives, it's the Village of Kerry that's on the hook to cover that. If you make up some of that ground in between, and there can even be, some years you'll make money, some years you'll lose money. Bottom line is, you're responsible for the total amount that gets paid into that fund with the exception of the contributions being made by the police officers into that fund and the amount that's earned from the portfolio.
What is the amount that we have, by 2040, we have to meet what amount, the $10 million? No, that's not, no.
You have to meet the actuarial requirement for the fund.
Okay, and the 725,000 that we're talking for next year is just to meet that $10 million mark?
That is just your requirement for one year.
Just for, just for one year.
No, I want to break that apart.
But we haven't, oh, yeah. There are two parts there, yeah.
Yeah. The, what I want to be clear on is we have our own actuary that does the analysis on the pension fund for us every year. And we fund at that level by your decision and policy, and we have every year. And that, that actuary has looked at our current employees, current retirees, current draws, years of age, all the amortization factors associated with the pension fund, and said that, that 585,000 has to be 720,000 for the next year for that contribution. Now, as Mike said earlier, our pension fund has a different view of those assumptions. There's a letter in your mailbox today from them that says, no, we think you should have it be at about 790,000. They have a different view of the assumptions than we do. But we have historically always funded to what our actuary says. And our actuary says you got to add another 130,000 this next year. And I'm explaining that, and I think the 2040 thing gets a little complicated, but in the more microcosmic view, if we took that seven and a half percent interest rate return assumption, and we went down to say 7%, which would be sensible from a financial management standpoint, you're probably looking at that 720 going up to the high eights into the nines. And we need to do that. It's a question of when. So that's the simplest way I can explain what we're talking about tonight. But again, that, you know, is what we use a good chunk of the property taxes for. That doesn't mean, you know, per se, you have to increase the property taxes 20,000 for this. It's just usually a big element of the discussion because those are hard fixed costs that you have to find somewhere. We've been doing it through, you know, reorganization, different staffing models, you know, some limited contracting, those kind of things. But at some point, when you're trying to find 140, 130, 140,000 dollar numbers, you know, that, that's challenging.
Are we able to say then where we're at today, where we need to be in 2040? And we're saying we need to come up with about 525,000 this year, 700 and something next year? Where are we at? Where do we need to get to? And what kind of numbers are we looking at then for the next 30, 25 years?
Well, there's a lot of factors that play into it. First off, the $720,000, please, these are approximate numbers. Of that 720, 420,000, I believe, of that number is what the normal cost is this year to cover your police department and your pensioners that are out there. The remaining 300 and some thousand of that number is the amount that's needed to fund the unfunded liability of the fund. That unfunded liability is a substantial number, and hopefully you will whittle down that piece over the next 15 years. That number, the annual number, is going to be driven by how much you earn on an annual basis, how much you are willing to contribute. And when all of those factors are added together, it'll determine how much that number will jump from year to year.
And part of the equation is that $200,000 that we're looking at contributing to that $10 million mark that we're looking at tonight?
Right.
Because that $10 million is what we're hoping will help us then.
Yes.
Reduce the amount of what we have to then becoming forward with.
That is the thought process.
Better return on our investment.
Yep, a 65, 35 split.
Yeah. Michael, do you want to talk about the impact of levying at zero and what that means to the future?
Well, there are, there are communities out there that choose to levy at zero in order to keep the property tax levy the same. Basically foregoing the amount that the village would be able to receive from the C P I or inflation number that we're given, and not taking into account the taxes, the additional taxes that could be levied due to new development in the community. And the reason that that's important is, I have stated in the past, just by my nature as a finance person, and by the nature of the fact that a non-home rule community does not have a lot of revenue sources available to it, that you need to take advantage of the opportunity to raise your tax levy by the C P I and the amount of new growth. And the reason that's important is even though it's not a large amount each and every year, each and every year it compounds. And where you benefit from that in terms of growth of your tax levy is from the compounding of those dollars over time. Once you miss it, once you don't levy for it, you don't have the opportunity to catch up again with it. It's gone. That opportunity has passed. There are some people who look at, please, I appreciate both sides. I understand that we would like to, you as a board would like to keep everyone's property tax bill as low as possible. That is what the whole goal is out there. But what I'm saying is many times, especially when the economy is slow, there are many things that get deferred, and the first thing to go generally are capital improvement, sometimes equipment, you cut the budget. In some cases, we cut labor. And the problem is, when it comes time that you need to replace some of those capital assets or the capital equipment or hire back some of those bodies, we're not hiring back many bodies for $20,000 a year if that's all the room there is in the tax levy. So my point is, when you have money, it's okay, you have that choice. But there are those times that come along when choices need to be made, additional funds are needed, and there's very few places to get them from.
Any other questions for Mike?
I just had one. I know last year, the board, which I was on, took the increase on the new growth.
$8,000.
Yeah. What's the history in the prior years to that? I mean, has there been at any point in recent history where we have had a 0% increase?
No, not in my history. I mean, we more than once just took the new growth. I believe twice we took the C P I plus the new growth.
But last year, we just took new growth.
The C P I, as you know, floats, so the value of it has been different year to year. Not by a lot.
I would recommend if anybody has any additional questions that you think about when you walk away from this meeting tonight, to, Michael's here Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. He's also available by phone. Give him a call.
Anytime.
He can kind of put it in terms that you want to understand or how you can, you know, it's not complicated, but it's complicated.
If you wanted to, I'd be willing, if somebody wanted to, to take the time just to draw like a few examples to show you if the E A V did this, what it would do to the village's tax rate, just so you could see both sides of the spectrum. But for the most part, you want to pay attention to what the amount of the levy is.
As Michael indicated, by December 15, we need to make a decision. Would the committee, the whole, like this re-agendize for its next meeting on December 1st to continue the dialogue?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I'm moving forward to department updates. Chief?
You have a statistical report that's in your packet as it relates to the activity of the police department. Couple of things that I'll point out, and that is that in comparison to the activity in 2014, during the same time period, traffic stops resulting in a traffic citation or some type of enforcement activity or DUI arrests increased this last month in October. Specifically, the traffic stop that resulted in citations up by about 30. But what was significant was that the DUI arrests went up from four in 2014 to 13 in 2015. This was a result of at least the enforcement actions of five officers. One sergeant had five DUI arrests, and then they kind of went down from three to one police officer, two officers had two, and then one officer had one DUI arrest. And again, it's one of those situations where it's not something that you can forecast necessarily, especially in October, and they were all over in regards to the dates. In regards to the activity that, the other thing that has increased was the no valid driver's license arrest and driver's license suspended or revoked. But again, those are nondiscretionary actions, and given that we have seen an increase in some of the contexts of traffic enforcement context, and because they are nondiscretionary, it's expected that you would see those type of actions increase. As it relates to business checks and subdivision checks, they were pretty similar, although subdivision tech checks went up a little bit in October, but the miles traveled again were on a trend where overall they're going up, but they're generally right around between 10,000 and 8,000 miles a month. You have information as it relates to the traffic crashes by intersection and by roadway. As you can see there in the report, we still are seeing a 5.8% reduction in traffic crashes in the Village of Kerry. However, last month, we saw an increase over 2014. There were total of 35 traffic crashes reported in the month of October. Some of the other activities that we saw were that reported burglary, criminal damage property identity theft, and deceptive practices increased. Again, there were some areas that saw more of that activity than others, but the identity theft and deceptive practice has been a trend that's been going on for a while. The other thing is that there was information as it relates to traffic crash reports and what revenues generated, it was unavailable. It was unavailable or indicated unavailable when it was, this report was provided to you. We did get those numbers from AVERS, the, Docu, actually, the entity that we use to kind of catalog those traffic crash reports, and it was, for a month, October was $115 that people went there and purchased their traffic crash reports. So to date, you'd be at a year-to-date of $695. Other than that, that's all I really have, unless you have any questions about the information that's been provided.
Just the administrative tow fee, how much is that?
$500.
$500? $500, okay. Is there any way that, and you, maybe you don't have to put it in the, this report or anything, but just let me know. What are the costs in terms of having in-house adjudication versus, what are the costs? And then, I'd like to see like what the profit margin is for us, because I see these administrative tow costs, and I think that's the only thing that really makes it worthwhile for us having that. So I'd like to kind of see what the costs are as opposed, if that was taken out of the equation, would it be worthwhile to have administrative adjudication in the village?
We've had that discussion, Mr. DeCharm and I, and the answer to that question is exactly that, is that we have to have those hearings. We have to have those hearings if we assess an administrative tow fee.
If we want to, correct. I do understand that.
People are entitled to due process. So they get to go before a hearing officer, and that hearing officer determines if we had caused to tow those vehicles based on some enumerated offenses that we assess those administrative tow fees for. And there are things like DUI, drive license suspended, novell DL, possession of controlled substances, things of that nature, but that's by ordinance, by the way. So the answer to your question is, we do paper a hearing officer, but the administrative tow fees more than offset that, plus we do assign the metro citations to the administrative adjudication process, as well as any other perhaps quasi-criminal activities that, you know, like curfew and things of that nature, they get assigned to administrative adjudication as well.
If the tow fees weren't in it, it wouldn't balance out.
It wouldn't be worth it. Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
It's also a convenience factor, too.
Oh, that's also true, you know, somebody doesn't have to go up to, you know, if we were to cite everyone for misdemeanor, they have to go to Woodstock.
Would they be paying the $500 tow fee, though, in Woodstock?
It's up to us in regards to administrative tow fee. So it's the village.
I mean, if we, if we didn't have that in-house here, and they had to go to Woodstock, would they be paying that $500 tow fee to Woodstock?
No, they weren't before. We may remember in 2012, we added that. That was not previously a fee assessed.
Correct.
And to the chief's point, though, I mean, there are some convenience factors with the whole program, but from a, if you're looking at strictly on a revenue basis, that's why I say that tow fee is essential, or otherwise it's an upside-down proposition.
And the Illinois vehicle tow, I'm sorry, the Illinois vehicle code allows us to assess that administrative tow fee based on the fees that we incur as it relates to, you know, an arrest or whatever that activity is, so that the offender basically is offsetting, you know, the operation.
I understand the argument, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Eric, you have anything for us?
I will go through this quickly. In lieu of a monthly report, this year we've, or this week, we've provided a summary of the mid-year operations for the Department of Public Works. Highlights this for six months have included the new five-year SIU contract, which consolidated our 12 union plat, union job classifications down to five for enhanced cross-training and other benefits to both sides. Operations-wise, I won't go through them all, but there's been substantial work in the street maintenance side, between parkway trees planted, sidewalks replaced, brush piles collected, over 2,000 there. Tree stumps with EAB, 675 have been removed for the first six months of the fiscal year. On the water and sanitation, our typical driving force is the production of drinking water and the treatment of sewage. In addition, we've flushed all of our hydrants at least once this year, over 1,108 on the cycle so far, and read over 18,000 water meters. Project highlights, road program was very successful with the contribution of our fiscal year budget, over, almost half a million square feet of roads were paved, in addition to drainage improvements with over 6,000 feet of underdrain pipe. When the process of the design for Three Oaks Road for our current budget, there'll be a public meeting for the, for the community and the board by this winter that we scheduled with our consultants and myself. Park Avenue Drainage and Roadway Design Improvements, the RFP will be received, proposed to receive this month, and for the next village board meeting, that contract will be considered. And progress is obviously being made on Sunset and Crest, with the third home being scheduled for demolition shortly upon approval of the contract tonight. And we already mentioned Metra, and coming this winter, one of the budgeted design concept work that will go on is for our downtown sidewalk. On water and sand, we just wrapped up this month, the painting of Water Tower III along Cary Oakonklin Road, along with the associated maintenance work on that tower. Hydrant painting, the second phase of that program was completed, and we're in the process of moving forward on our wastewater treatment plant feasibility study, of which an update will be given to the board at a special meeting on Thursday. Other miscellaneous accomplishments, special event support, Cary Main Street Fest, of course, along with the other events like Mary Carey. Probably the biggest one so far is the institution of our Cary online citizen request tracking system. So we're now using that website to allow residents to online submit non-emergency requests. And we also mentioned a couple other capital project items, the rooftop HVAC unit that's slated for replacement later this week, was already approved through the process. And then we've also begun the process of retrofitting downtown LED lights. So we're going to be using more energy-efficient luminaires and bulbs than a lot of our currently equipped high-pressure sodium lights. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Just regarding the last thing that you mentioned about the uplighting and the LED lights and that, are we considering one or the other for the downtown lights in terms of Christmas lights? Are we still going to wrap the trees, or are we thinking one or the other?
Perfect segue.
I read an update somewhere, and it sounded like it was going to be one or the other.
Yes. If you have a chance to head out through downtown tonight, we have a mock-up, a demo of the upcoming lighting approach for this year. We're going to switch to LED lights, so we're wrapping the trunks, but then we're going to be draping the lights around the canopies of the trees with a little bit denser approach than some of the mock-ups and trials we considered in past years. This is a balance to give us a good pop in the downtown as far as the effect, but also allow us to be able to remove the lights, not have to cut them off when they're on the branches, and take advantage of that long life expectancy with LEDs.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any feedback on the look of it? The two trees that we put on, there's a big tree by the corner of High and West Main, and I believe the small tree is right around the, right down from that same section.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Great job. Is this posted on our, on anywhere? I mean, I think it'd be great to have something that gets to be posted.
Yeah, we'll put it on the trump page of the website on the click box for a week.
Great.
Thank you. Was there any discussion by the committee of the whole of any requested future items?
I did have one thing. I just, I wouldn't mind having a discussion about the duties of the village clerk and the role of the clerk, and just moving forward. I know we had a discussion about that at the previous meeting, so I just kind of like to get clarification in terms of duties, role.
Responsibilities.
Responsibilities, surrounding communities, and that.
When would you like that?
I know we have a lot on our plate now, so.
Can we wait till like after the holidays?
Four months, yeah, January, February, somewhere around there. That'd be fine.
David?
Yeah. Eric, maybe I should ask the question. The downtown sidewalk, was that including our discussions about white topping, or is that a separate item?
The white topping would be a separate item with regards to the rest of the downtown improvements. This one will be specific to the sidewalk aspect of it.
That's fine. I guess probably January, then. I prepared some packets for the board, which we'll disseminate to talk about some of those improvements with the white topping that we've had discussions, and I've got some further articles. I guess I'll put that out there first and then look in January for a discussion. But for the next meeting, I plan to bring forward a proposal for the Village of Cary to adopt an environmental sustainability program to allow us to join the Caucus of Mayor's, the Greenest Region Compact, the GRC. It'll involve us adopting a minimum of 10 goals for sustainability into the future. And with the Village of Lakewood, we're drafting a joint resolution to prepare as the first two communities in McHenry County to get involved and join 150 other communities here in Illinois, helping to move their villages and towns forward environmentally and greener for the future. So I'd like that to be on the committee of the whole for the discussion and the resolution to be voted on. We've got to vote on it by January 1, so if we could have that on there.
Okay, yeah.
It'll just be a letter and a simple resolution.
We may consolidate agendas on December 1 to one big meeting, but that doesn't mean we couldn't have it on a pre-read on that meeting, so.
That's great. It'll be simple. Thanks.
You're liking that position?
I love it. I absolutely do, and I'll give a discussion during the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I just want to ask Dave about this. So as part of that study or conversation, would there be any aspect of the inefficiency of our present village hall and our?
Absolutely, Rick. Absolutely. Could you, could you know that it's number three on, on the list of the 10 goals that I put in there?
How did it get so low?
Right now, there's only seven available funding sources for it, so as the economy starts to get better, I imagine there'll be more money, but right now, there's some grants available for some great energy efficiency changes, and the new village properties and current village properties, our fleets are all possibilities.
You know, you got an issue when all the squirrels come by the windows in the wintertime.
Yeah. And thank you to Dave for stepping up to take care of that for us. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.